All right then. It is now six minutes after seven o'clock and I'll call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. We are here at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. It is Monday, August 3rd, 2015. Roll call.
I have five councilors present with Counselor DeForest and Counselor Lubke joining us by conference room.
Thank you. Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, we have special orders of the day and announcements. Three A.
Is a proclamation declaring August 4th, 2015 as National Night Out.
Thank you. And Counselor Hendricks will present.
Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, NATW, is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 4th, 2015 entitled National Night Out, and whereas the 32nd Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Beloit to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts, and whereas the Beloit Police Department, Beloit Area Crime Stoppers, and the Beloit Fire Department play a vital role in assisting our community through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Beloit, Wisconsin, and are supporting National Night Out locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of Beloit be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Beloit, and whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, the City Council President of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 4th, 2015 as National Night Out in Beloit, and encourages residents to acknowledge the event with their neighbors by hosting block parties, cookouts, youth programs, and other such activities that strengthen and promote neighborhood spirit and police-community partnerships. Presented this third day of August 2015, Charles M. Haynes, President, Beloit City Council.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Police Department and the community, I accept the proclamation. Thank you. Look forward to meeting a lot of folks tomorrow night on National Night Out, and I encourage everyone in Beloit to come out and meet your law enforcement partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, public hearings. Item four A.
Four A is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow a single-family attached dwelling in C-2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the property located at 911 East Grand Avenue.
Madam Director.
Michelle Crossley, who is the applicant, is, has applied for the conditional use to allow residents on the second floor of the building. She has recently purchased the building and is planning to open a dog grooming business on the first floor. The second floor is not currently set up as living space, but she would be making all the required improvements to make it living space. Plan Commission did review this item on July 22nd and voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend approval. And we did send a public notice out to the neighbors. We did get two calls indicating support for the application, and the last page of the staff report actually outlines what those, who they were from, and they basically said they fully supported approval of this request.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item four A. Anyone wishing to speak on item four A, please approach the podium and state your name and Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four A. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four A, and before I ask for a, for a motion, I will say tonight because of the councilors that are attending by phone, it would be difficult for us to vote. Otherwise, we're going to be doing all votes tonight by roll call. So do we have a, any motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Oh, move by Kelly and second by Hendricks. Okay, for some reason it's not working for you today, so Counselor Kincaid.
Thank you. Will the, will this facility have any overnight facilities for the guests that get groomed or the strictly daytime work?
There is no boarding, no. There is no boarding.
Yeah, if you could approach.
I'm sorry, I was looking at our planning director.
No, there will be no boarding.
Thank you. I was looking at her and I heard a different voice. I didn't really quite get it.
All right.
So there's no, is a bright line between this and whatever might be a kennel or kennel-like operation.
Yeah, there's a different, I mean, there's different requirements. I mean, we have kennels separated, also separate line in the use table. I don't think they're allowed in this zoning district. I don't know that off the top of my head, but generally they're allowed in the more intensive zoning districts. She's just doing a dog grooming business.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other counsel, oh, Counselor Slonaker. You, you've no longer need to ask a question. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right then, we'll take this by a roll call vote. I would like to start with the two councilors on the, on the phone first.
Counselor DeForest?
Aye.
Counselor Lubke?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Slonaker? That passes unanimously.
All right, and item four B.
Four B is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages in C-2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the property located at 901 Bayless Avenue.
All right, Madam Director.
The applicant is seeking permission to sell beer in a bait-and-tackle shop planned to open in August of 2015. This building was previously used as a bait-and-tackle shop, and they sold beer. That license was held till 2011 when the business closed. The current tenant, an applicant, has a five-year lease on the building. He's indicated that beer will be the only type of alcohol to be sold at the shop. This property is located within 300 feet of a church. However, that prohibition within 300 feet of a church only applies to liquor licenses, not beer licenses. Plan Commission did review this item on July 22nd and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions recommended by staff, which are in the resolution. Per the request from Counselor DeForest, the Police Department did provide police calls within 1,000 feet from June 15th to July 22nd, which are included in your packet. The conditions of approval are that this conditional use permit authorizes indoor alcohol sales within the existing building located at 901 Bayless Avenue, that the applicant shall obtain and retain all applicable liquor licenses while the conditional use is established and maintained. The applicant may only possess a Class A fermented beverage license along the sale of beer for off-premise consumption, and then our standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being able to be approved administratively. And we did notice the neighbors, and we did not get any comments from any of the neighbors.
All right, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item four B. Anyone wishing to speak on item four B, please approach the podium and state your name and Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four B. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four B and entertain a motion.
Motion for approval.
Moved by Lubke, second by Slonaker. Counselor Kincaid.
Does somebody in the Police Department, is there anything about the report that was prepared for us? Is there anything illuminating about it with respect to a liquor permit in the 901?
Thank you, Chief.
Sure, no problem. There isn't anything of value at this point. It really gives you a snapshot of calls for service pre-licensed, and we can look 30 days or more after a license is issued to see if there's any increase in criminal activity. Most of the calls that you see around here are traffic stops in assisting other jurisdictions, and there's really only a couple of crimes in general that have occurred, so we can take a kind of a measurement from here.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Is this something we'll be doing for other liquor license requests, or is this the first time I've seen it in the three and a half years I've been on? Information on that? Thoughts?
And Madam City Manager, you wanted to say?
Thank you. The information was included in this particular packet at the request of one of the council members at the last meeting. What I can say is that looking at this kind of information prior to renewal or upon any complaint is information that we are using moving forward. You may be aware that there's an establishment that we've recently had some issues with, certainly some activities that appear to have been initiated at that facility. So looking at these kind of information can be valuable if any action or any notice is required to move forward, but as this is an approval for the first time, I think it, its value is more limited than it would be upon a renewal or in response to a complaint.
Madam City Attorney.
I just wanted to note, this is a conditional use permit for just beer only. Just I know that the term beer and liquor are used interchangeably, but we need to focus, it's just the beer here. But there will, they will have to apply for an alcohol license as well for that establishment, so today it's just to approve the conditional use to allow the alcohol sales. Ms. Christensen, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have these on occasion when a location either doesn't use it for 12 months or has to come back. I can't recall the last one, but I want to say within the last three months or so, we had one on Liberty. I believe it was denied, but Liberty Mart. So this isn't unusual, it just doesn't happen frequently.
Sure. Ms. Christensen, this property is, has a church or a place of worship and residential properties on three sides and a restaurant on the fourth side. Are there any other recommendations that you will be, or any requests that you will be making of the petitioner to improve the, like, the looks of this property, which has, if I'm not mistaken, about 12,000 square feet of parking space? I don't know how many spaces they need for a bait shop, but it's probably a little bit over the top.
I mean, they have enough parking. I mean, so we're not going to be, there's nothing we're going to be requiring from them beyond this conditional use.
Though they don't have any, they don't, there's no parking requirement. Obviously, they need a couple of cars, I guess, once in a while.
It's an existing building. It has parking adjacent to it. We wouldn't be requiring more parking just to occupy a building. We have a lot of buildings in the city that would never be occupied in that situation, and I mean, I think we want to try to keep buildings occupied and, you know, businesses reoccupying buildings are possible. I don't think we ever had a parking issue over at Dick's Bait and Tackle when that's what it was.
I can't imagine we would, frankly.
And there is parking on the adjacent, you know, when you go down the commercial corridor. We didn't hear from any of the residents that are nearby, that they're concerned about reoccupying this as a bait-and-tackle shop. I don't think it's open, long hours, late into the night. I mean, people are coming probably early in the morning, picking up some beer and some supplies and going on their way, so I don't think it's historically been a problem. So I guess we weren't concerned as staff. But the, as Attorney Carrier indicated, the beer license will still come before you. They have, I think they've applied and they're going through the process right now.
Is this a year-round facility?
I believe it is.
Mr. President?
Hi, yes, Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I understand that the existing prohibition about 300 feet within a church only applies to liquor license and not beer license, but I still wanted to be sure that the church as a neighbor has been notified of this conditional use, and I didn't see them listed in our packets as one of the addresses that received a notice. Is that correct?
The owner across the street would have received notice. I can't speak to which of the own, who actually owns the building. Just because a church is occupying a building doesn't mean they own the building. The Muslim Center of Beloit, that's the place of worship across the street, they're on the list. The list kind of runs together. But they were, they were noticed, they received a mailed notice.
Okay, thank you. And then one other point of comment to what City Manager Curtis Luther had shared, I do think it is helpful when we look at renewals that we, we get more detailed information about the calls for service in the vicinity of places that are serving alcohol, so I appreciate, appreciate the baseline data that we've received about calls for service, and I hope that we as a practice going forward will look at those calls for service and renewals of all of the licensees in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything additionally you wanted to say, Counselor Kincaid?
Yeah. I noticed on the roof, there's one tilting, flapping beer sign. Is, are you asking him to take that away or something?
We haven't.
That's something he might do, or somebody?
If they're selling the beer on premises, I don't think we can require them to remove it.
So the.
We can require it to be hung properly, but that's, I think, about all we can do.
The only, I only went by there. I couldn't see if there was actually a name of the entity on it, but it seemed the most important thing was the beer. And there was another sign with no structure of a sign for a beer on the other side of the roof, and there's nothing there, but it seemed like the codes of enforcement would clean that up for us.
We hadn't ordered the abandoned sign removed when they were vacant. They have not put up any new signs for their business as of when we took these pictures, because all sides except the back are shown, so they have not put up a new sign yet. That sign, I believe, used to say Dick's Bait and Tackle or Dix or something on it, but we'll take a look at the sign and make sure it's code compliant.
Could that be a condition of approval?
To remove the sign? Yes.
Be nice not to see it there.
I guess. I don't, I mean, if you think it impacts the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity, your findings are fact.
Duh.
Then you can, I guess, add it as a condition.
I think it would be consistent with that.
Because otherwise, I don't know if we have enough in the ordinance to actually require the beer sign removed.
So the, in getting this permit, well, it's really a zoning issue, I guess, we can't ask for any, anything other than the, there's a little bit of grass on the property. There's, there's no, is there a possibility that could be expanded a little bit?
We, you can add landscaping as a condition of approval of the conditional use. We have no mechanism to require additional landscaping because they're just reoccupying a building. Our landscape ordinance is clear that you have to be doing a new building or adding on before, or reconstructing your parking lot before we can require landscaping as staff. So if you want landscaping added, you can do it as part of a conditional use permit, but staff cannot do it as part of this simple reoccupation of a building.
So you, but the Planning Department had no thoughts about talking about landscaping with the petitioner?
No, because it really wouldn't add much because it's basically located right on the corner, zero lot line setback right in the corner. Normally, we would require landscaping where you, it would have an impact on the streetscape. This will not impact the streetscape of this building. So no, we did not add that, as you can see.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments on this item? I think we have a motion and a, and a second, so let us go ahead and call the matter. Roll call vote, start with the individuals on the panel.
Counselor DeForest?
Aye.
Counselor Lubke?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Slonaker?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item four C.
Is a resolution authorizing a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor seating area and outdoor sales possession and consumption of alcohol in a CBD-1, Central Business District Core, for the property located at 430 East Grand Avenue.
Madam Director.
Then Sushi and Grill will be opening soon on the ground floor of the Phoenix Building. They propose the use of a raised concrete patio area on the west side of the Phoenix Building, adjacent to the ramp leading from East Grand Avenue to the rear of the building. The patio is partially covered by an existing pergola. The furniture in the outdoor seating area will include tables and chairs as well as lounge-style seating with seating for 24 customers. They are, have also applied for a Sidewalk Cafe license, which those are approved administratively by staff after review at DBA and Clerk's Office. This is not within 300 feet of a church. This was recommended or reviewed by Plan Commission on July 22nd, and they did remove a condition which was requested by the Fire Department, which would have prohibited tables with an open flame. However, since that meeting, working with the Fire Chief, we were looking at the code and Section 6.031A 3E of the Fire Prevention Code states that no portable outdoor fireplace may be located within 10 feet of any building or combustible structure. Our planning director did go out and measure the outdoor patio and found the walls to be 18.2 feet apart. So the Fire Prevention Code actually prohibits the use of that, but you don't need to add the condition back in because it's code. I mean, it doesn't need to be in the condition of approval because it's in our ordinance, but Plan Commission did recommend approval, subject to the conditions which are listed in your resolution, which are that this conditional use permit authorizes then Sushi and Grill to serve food and beverages within the existing raised concrete patio area on the west side of the Phoenix Building. Prior to serving alcoholic beverages in the outdoor seating area, the applicant shall expand their alcoholic beverages license to include the outdoor seating area. The outdoor seating area shall include an outdoor alarm, marked exits, clear 36-inch exit pathways, and no net loss in exit width. The Fire Inspector and Building Official will inspect the completed outdoor seating area and establish a maximum occupancy which shall be posted inside the building and within the outdoor seating area, and then our standard condition about major changes coming back through this public process and minor changes being approved administratively included in your packet where the site plan showing the layout, but also there are some illustrations of what the chairs and the seating will look like, as well as some photographs of what that outdoor seating area looks like.
All right, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item four C. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on item four C, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item four C. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item four C. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on item four C, and I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Kincaid, second by Slonaker. Counselor Kincaid.
I've seen the documents that have been produced, and they're very impressive. I think we'll be very happy, and I can hardly wait for sushi. I haven't had it for a while. I do have one question for planning. This will be on the sidewalk in front of the building? Or no?
There will be, there will be a Sidewalk Cafe, and this application is for a patio area that's on their property just west of the building.
Okay, so there'll be no encroachment on the sidewalk?
There will be a Sidewalk Cafe, so there will be two things, a Sidewalk Cafe on the sidewalk, and then there'll be this outdoor patio area that will also have tables and chairs.
What would be the encroachment on the sidewalk?
I don't have that with me. That's a staff approval, so I did not bring that with me.
Maybe the petitioner knows.
You know how much sidewalk space they're taking up?
Please, yes, state your name and address for the record.
Mike Brat, Hendricks Commercial Properties. Do you look in for like a square footage or how much off of?
Distance.
Distance.
How much, how much will be occupied on the sidewalk?
About four feet off the building. The building into the sidewalk, four feet.
How much, let's put it another way, how much room will be left for the people to walk along the sidewalk without bumping into?
Four to five feet.
Four to five feet.
Of clear and obstructed space. Is that answer your question?
Good question. So will it be the same as Lucy's? Okay, have you seen Lucy? A few tables along the wall.
I, I can picture it now. Has, has the staff recommended that there be a minimum of five feet clearance with the size of a sidewalk?
I didn't review the Sidewalk Cafe license. That is reviewed by the planning director, so since planning staff was approving and approve it, I didn't bring that information with me this evening.
So what's before us right now is just the seating area that's on the side of the building?
Yeah, the conditional use on the, on the private property.
Right, okay. All right. Any other questions, Counselor Kincaid? All right, is, anyone joining us on the phone have any questions?
I do not.
All right. And all right then, we'll go ahead and call the matter by roll call with the councilors on the phone starting.
Counselor DeForest?
Aye.
Counselor Lubke?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Slonaker?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
We're now on to item five, which is citizens' participation. We have reached the point on the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless an item you are speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on requests at a future meeting or may refer the speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making personal attacks. I do have several people who've stated that they wish to come forward and speak. I'll handle them in just the order that they're in, on my desk, so I would like to call forward Craig Zastro. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Craig Zastro, 1631 East Ridge Road here in Beloit, and I'm here in favor of the change to the sign ordinance. I brought a couple of handouts for you. The first one has three pictures on it, which shows our present sign from the street and from both directions coming down the street, and if you can find it in the picture there, it's somewhere in the middle. And then the second one is a proposal that was done for us back in 2012 as a possibility and would go in the same position as this sign, and as you can see, it has a V shape, so it doesn't face directly across the street, but it would go in the same position. Any questions or?
All right, thank you. We may, as we deliberate.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Janelle, I'm going to butcher this, Marats? Okay, thank you.
Janelle Marats, 2450 Cranston. I'm here on behalf of the school district of Beloit for Aldridge Intermediate School, and I would like to request the use of a digital sign at Aldridge Intermediate School. The sign allows us to effectively communicate with our parents, and it has been very difficult having a non-digital sign trying to maintain the message and update the communications, and the digital sign will allow us to maintain very consistent and effective messaging, cost-effective messaging, because we may be able to save money by reducing our paper notices. It's going to be very flexible to our audiences, including being able to easily use English and Spanish, and we'll be able to keep our messages very modern and hold our attention of our community because we'll be able to keep them real time. We can even integrate them to our website. Thank you.
Thank you. David Clark. Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Dave Clark. I live at 2735 Riverside Drive in Beloit. I've been a citizen here for 34 years and served Central Christian Church during that time. I'm here as well to urge approval of the electronic sign ordinance. Our old sign is 25 years old and was designed for a earlier century, and our church is a contemporary church, serving a contemporary community, and we'd like to have a 21st-century sign, just as Beloit has grown in the last 25 years, so has our church, and we've changed. We're a multi-ethnic church representing our community. Obviously, our African-American constituents and Asian constituents can read English, but our. our, we have a Spanish-speaking congregation. I have a Spanish-speaking pastor, non-English speaking. I get along better with him than anybody on staff. But our Spanish-speaking folks can't read English, and presently the sign, as you can see, is pathetic and inadequate, but with an electric sign, we can communicate to them in their own language, not just to our constituents, but to the entire community. In fact, as we serve the community, we serve tons of people who don't come to our church. Obviously, if someone comes to our church, they can find our schedules and events on a website, but in our town, tons of people can't afford a computer or internet access. Having a contemporary communicative device that speaks to our community would be gratefully helpful. Take, for instance, this week, we are the premier host site for the Global Leadership Summit. People from all over the state line area will be coming here. There's really no signage to identify our site other than the GPS on their phones. Every week, we feed hungry people here. We have given away over 42,000 meals already this year to 1,100 families representing 3,600 family members, and every Wednesday they keep coming for food. They're not associated with our church, excuse me, for the most part, and so they're completely unaware of our property, our campus, or the times of our food distribution. Throughout the year, we have irregular events like Project Hope, when we put on free medical clinic, dental clinic, eye clinic, free, because we want people to feel valued, massages, manicures, pedicures, hair care, free shoes, free clothing, and a free hot meal. And so this kind of signage that could announce appropriate events as they come up would be greatly beneficial to us. We've been working with the city for over three years to try to bring this about and have made our best effort to follow the procedures and policies that the city has set for us, and we would just like to, you know, sometimes it feels like there's more obstruction than opportunity. I was at one commission meeting, and one of the members gave the reason for opposing a sign was lyrics from a song written in 1970. And I would rather find some forward-looking person who is more interested in the future than lyrics from a song in the past, and the song was written by a Canadian band, and so I'd rather have the freedom of the US on my side. But we really look to you for your help, that we can finally get a sign that's up to date and can communicate well with our community as we try to serve it as a positive asset. Any questions?
Thank you, Pastor. All right, and finally, I have James Van de Bogart.
Jim Van de Bogart, 2091 Collingswood Drive here in the city. You just passed a resolution that gave lip service to the concept of neighborhood safety. Ms. Christensen talked about use, enjoyment, and of neighboring properties. She talked about streetscapes. She talked about, Mr. Kincaid asked about tilting, flapping beer signs. I was here two weeks ago in opposition to this request, and again, I'm in opposition to it. This is not the way this city should go. At 25 miles an hour, or at 40 miles an hour on Milwaukee Road, when you're going by a sign, these people have all kinds of good information to communicate, but as you're going by at 40 miles an hour, how many seconds are you going to spend looking to your right or your left instead of looking at the road? This is a major, in my view, safety issue. You're not going to be able to prove this. Nobody involved in an accident is going to say, oh, I was looking at the sign, I wasn't paying attention to the road. They're not going to admit that sort of thing. You're not going to be able to get demonstrable proof showing that there's a higher accident rate, because nobody's going to admit that. But you can't read, at the speed the cars are going, you can't read all the information that they have to put out there. I'm not in opposition to either the school district or the church, obviously. My bugaboo is with the electronic variable signs in general. I think that as you approve this, or if you approve this, this is one more inch or two of the camel getting its nose under the tent in terms of setting off an ad war for these signs across the community. We've already got, I'm sure you've seen it, the mobile pickup truck with the garish sign that goes around. That's the sort of future you're allowing to incrementally come into town. Another thought I had, and I won't repeat all my safety issues and that kind of thing, but is the city prepared to pay for the cost of enforcement on all these electronic variable signs? Are you going to have somebody who has the talent to look at the brightness, the lumens of each of the signs? Are you going to have somebody that notices the frequency of their change? Are you going to have the legal talent to go into court and defend your ordinance? Because you're going to run into the big bucks who want this stuff, and they're going to spend unlimited amounts of money to get what they want, and you're going to have to fight this. So my objection is this is one more camel getting its nose under the tent in this whole electronic variable sign issue, and I think it's unsafe as all get out, and I would ask you to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on our citizens' Second call for persons to come forward and speak. Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Hey, good afternoon. How you doing? My name is Mark Smellin. I'm the principal at Aldridge Intermediate School. Just speaking to you about the sign request. We've been working, trying to work towards a sign to change the one we had. The one we had was outdated. It was very, very tall, and it lit up as well. It was good for us, we could actually communicate messages on both sides. However, one of the problems was when winter came, or the ice and snow would come around for about four and a half, five months, it's very difficult for us because we require a 14-foot ladder to get up there, and it's very unsafe for us to try to change the sign. So what we've been trying to do the last two to three years is just put a simple message up there that would unfortunately, though, would sit up there for about five months due to the weather, because of, because of how it was set up. So we were looking at trying to get a LED, the changing sign. One of the things I, as I was looking into this prior to speaking here a moment ago, is that looking at different cities around the United States that have been doing this, and one of the things, the sign we would look at, I think that we can keep it at one color, keep it to a scrolling message like you would have on the interstate to try to reduce some of the safety concerns that Mr. Van de Bogart has. We're not looking to add animation on this sign at all, or flashing images, or trying to increase the font or bring it down, or, you know, so the message is try to get out a simple message. And I think what I've read a couple, well, I use one of the cities as Portland, Oregon, try to keep it to like one color and one message a day. And I think that would really make it easier for us, because by doing that, I see that also happened, like at CVS, so they have a red, they use red for their lights, and they keep it like one message, like what the sale is for the day, or they list a couple of items. And it's real simple when you drive paths, that's on Prairie Avenue as well. I don't see a lot of people getting accidents due to the CVS sign. It's not a hazard for us. I don't think it would be a hazard for the people on Milwaukee Avenue. I think is one of the things is you're trying to keep the message clear. One of the things you have to consider is like what you would try to do to try to put some requirements for that. I think it's important that the sign be turned off, so we reduce the amount of lights. We could, we could not do that at other places. We could do that now if we would have a sign like this, and that would make it a lot easier for the neighborhoods and the cars driving by. But I think, try to, try to think a couple of requirements you want to have for one of these LED signs, and I think that would be a uniform that we could put in place for all, you know, for the entire city as we move forward with this. But I respect your time, and I hope this helps you with some information. Okay?
Thank you. Any other persons wishing to come forward and speak on item 5, citizens' participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on our citizens' participation? Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on our citizens' participation? Hearing none, I'll close citizens' participation. We will move on to item 6, the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Do we have any counselors wishing any item removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda consists of items 6A through 6C. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Sloniker, second by Hendricks. We will approve the consent agenda again by roll call vote with the counselors on the phone starting.
Counselor DeForest?
Aye.
Counselor Lukey?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Haines?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Sloniker?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
All right, now for the main show. Item 7 in ordinances, item 7A.
7A is proposed ordinance to amend sections 30.17 sub 1B2, sub B3, sub B6, and sub B7A of the Code of General Ordnances of the City of Beloit pertaining to electronically variable message signs. Second reading.
Madam Director.
So the ordinance before you tonight, the changes that would be made, would be adding the PLI zoning district as one more district where these signs would be allowed. There's a change which says that they could not be located in the vision triangle, and then a change which says that they can only operate between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM if the establishment at which they are located abuts or is directly across the street from a residential zoning district. At our last meeting, I talked about how many parcels were in PLI, so what we did is we looked at it more closely to make sure the numbers are correct, and what we did find is that there are 155 parcels zoned PLI in the City of Beloit. Of these 155 parcels, 70 are owned by the City of Beloit, so you're down to 85 parcels. 28 are owned by Beloit College, because their campus is broken up into a couple of different parcels. 21 are owned by the school district of Beloit. Churches and private cemeteries are located on 12 of the parcels, and the remaining parcels are owned by a variety of owners, including Alliant Energy, Beloit Health System, the historical, Beloit Historical Society, the YMCA, the US Army, Family Services, and the Boys and Girls Club.
All right, thank you.
And just for the record, signs cannot flash, cannot move, the text cannot scroll, the text cannot flip, the text can only change every five seconds. So it is not a flashing sign. It changes every five seconds, and you may consider that flashing, but it's not really, it's not flashing. And we did deal with enforcement with the high school because their sign was scrolling and flipping and doing a million things. And so we did talk to them about their sign. So it cannot do any of those things, just so you know, as you're talking about the electronic signs.
All right, thank you. All right, to get the item on the table, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Moved by Lukey, who is seconded? Second by Sloniker. All right, counselor comments and questions?
Madam?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Lukey.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think as presented by Mrs. Christensen, these signs would actually be safer than the static ones that don't light up. As you come on them in other places for a restaurant, whatever, people sometimes strain to read what the specials are, what the jokes are, or whatever. These signs will be clear, easy to read, and I would advocate they're even safer. So for that reason, I'm going to vote in the affirmative. Thank you.
Counselor Kincaid? Oh, I'll take the pass. We can take the pass, okay. Counselor DeForest, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a comment. Thank you, Mr. President. I too agree that any safety concerns are exaggerated. We certainly have electronic variable signs currently in usage in the City of Beloit, and I haven't seen any demonstrative concerns with traffic safety or traffic accidents related to them. I also, I agree in the matter of fairness, I think that, you know, since we're allowing them without impinging it on, you know, residents in terms of, you know, their enjoyment of their properties, if we're allowing it in other zoning districts where we're not concerned about residents, that it would be completely appropriate to also allow it in PLIs where we don't have the resident concerns. I'm also, given our very stringent, pretty rigid sign ordinance requirements that don't allow flashing, that don't allow scrolling, that don't allow animation, I'm not concerned about these being highly distractible signs, or, you know, very ugly signs. So for those reasons, I'm very comfortable with voting for this amendment.
All right, do we have any other? Counselor Kelly? Go ahead.
All right, so I'm, as I look at these signs, I mean, I appreciate what the school district's doing, and I, and I think they need the signs, but that's a single-color sign, and I know that they're allowed in every other district, so this is really, the point is that I don't like the big screens, flashy signs, but it's got nothing to do with PLI or the business district. So I can't, it's not like I'm trying to separate them. So I appreciate that they need the sign that gives out the information. I just have a problem with one sign after another of these full TV screen type signs. And so I, I mean, this is a whole issue with the sign ordinance and not just with this piece. So I, it's one thing it has to do with the other, I guess, that's what I'm going to say. I just, I don't want to not vote for it, because I do think the school needs it, but I hate the fact that Central Christian is going to put in a big TV screen monitor, full color with full pictures, some similar to what Tilly has, which I think is not good. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll throw my two cents worth in, because honestly, you know, I sit here and, you know, counselor, former counselor to Van de Bogart has always been articulate, and I've always had the deepest respect for everything he has to say. Sometimes we don't always agree, but when he says something and he's vehement about it, I always, I research it, I ponder deeply, so that I understand his opinion, because I think that highly of him. I get where he's coming from on this, I honestly do. I personally couldn't find anything that referenced to make, for this to be a definable safety issue. I understand that it certainly can be if someone takes their eyes off of the road. I think if everybody had to have one of these things and they were inexpensive, I would feel a little bit differently about it, but I think their expense means that we're not going to see vast proliferation, and I see this, extending this to PLI, and with the restrictions that are in here of operating it only during, up to 10:00 PM are not unreasonable. That being said, if, I do have some trepidation about it, so I suppose at this point it really comes down to making a decision to vote, and I'll be making my decision as I vote. Counselor Kincaid?
Well, there are 155 additional parcels in which this people could ask for a sign. Not likely, probably not enough rich people to put them in there, but I think, I think we're headed in the right, in the wrong direction with these kinds of signs. I have remained to be convinced, notwithstanding the fact that I won't vote for this, I pledge that I will keep an open mind, but at this point, I just simply don't see it.
Thank you. Counselor Hendricks?
Just given the stipulations that Ms. Christensen already explained, I'm in favor of moving forward, moving Beloit forward. I'm in favor of the future. And like Pastor Clark said, you know, the one sign there is pretty old, and if you're going 40 down Milwaukee Road, by, in five seconds, if it takes five seconds to switch, you're going to pass it anyway. So if I'm just driving five seconds and I'm looking, and this says Central Christian, and it's stagnant, it's going to be one stagnant message, given the stipulations, anyway. So why not make it look nicer and give them the opportunity to spread their messages? And I know at the schools, there are parents that sit and wait for their students, and, you know, the messages can be there and you can look, and, you know, they, like he said, there was different languages that they're able to display on the signs. I appreciate the concern about safety, and if I appreciate the, the concern about safety, and if that were something that were a little bit more, to me, if it were a little bit more hazardous in my mind, then I would feel differently, but just, I know, I drive fast, and I glance. Oops, I didn't say that out loud. No, I glance, and, you know, I may not be able to get the full message, but if it's something that I see, you know, maybe they can flip around and go look at the sign while they're in the parking lot, or something of that nature. But I don't see a true hazard to where we should prevent these signs at the moment, so I'm right now in favor of it.
Councillor Kelly, did you have anything additionally you wanted to say?
So the thing is that it's, it's got nothing to do with PLI. So now, all of a sudden, there's, these signs are starting to get cheaper, I think, and we're, we're going to get them everywhere. It's, the fact that it's a PLI or a business, doesn't change anything for me. So it doesn't matter to me if they're PLI, or just a regular business. I mean, if the car lots get big signs, all of a sudden, we're going to have all these signs. So I think it's an issue of the whole sign order, the sign order as a whole, not just this piece. So that's something that we're going to look at at a future date, I'm sure. So I guess we'll just leave this for now.
Okay. Well, I, I'll toss in one, one minor comment along with this, that if there were more of the signs, we probably would pay less attention to them than we will if there's just a few.
Pollution.
Right. Okay, all right, do we have any other councillor questions or comments? Okay, councillor Sloniker?
I appreciated what Regina said, very good points, and I'm also in favor of it. It's good communication for the community, I think it'll help promote some positive activities in the community, and that's all.
All right, thank you. All right then, we will go ahead and call the matter. Again, it'll be a roll call vote, we'll start with the councilors on the phone.
Councillor DeForest?
Aye.
Councillor Lubke?
Yes.
Councillor Hendricks?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Sloniker?
Aye.
Five yes, two no.
All right, thank you. All right, item seven B.
Is a proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate section 1.10 of the Code of General Ordinances for the City of Beloit pertaining to emergency management. Second reading.
Chief?
Good evening. This ordinance was presented at first reading in our last city council meeting. There haven't been any changes, I haven't received any correspondence or questions from any of the councilors, I would entertain those at this time. This particular ordinance recreates our emergency management, focuses our energy on supporting emergency operations in the field, and then also focuses our training, gets us in compliance with the National Incident Management System, and then also bases our plan on the National Response Framework. So gets us in compliance with working seamlessly with all levels of government, from the local government, county, state, and federal. Any questions? I'd be entertaining those at this time.
All right, in order to ask those questions, I think we'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kincaid, and seconded by Sloniker. Do we have any councillor questions and comments for the chief? Anyone on the phone?
No.
No.
All right then, anyone here? Hearing none, I think we appreciate your efforts, chief, and we'll go ahead and call the matter.
Thank you very much.
Well, this will be a roll call vote, with the councilors on the phone starting.
Councillor DeForest?
Aye.
Councillor Lubke?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Sloniker?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Item eight would be appointments, we have none, so item nine will be councillor activities and upcoming events. We'll start with councillor Lubke on the phone.
I'll pass to councillor DeForest.
All right, she will be next.
Is that all right with you, Mr. President?
Yes, absolutely, you were next anyway.
All right. I would like to thank the firefighters and paramedics who are on hand to assist with the two house fires that we had recently in the City of Beloit, and grateful that through their great work, we didn't have any casualties, and, and they were able to limit the property damage. I would also like to thank those individuals who helped organize the Stop the Violence Unity in the Community event, I was able to attend that, and appreciated the turnout, and it was great to see folks from all walks of life come together to really demonstrate that we are committed as a community to pulling up our sleeves and doing what we can in violence prevention. I was able to attend the Porter Avenue Watch Group meeting, and appreciate that neighborhood group's efforts to promote neighborhood solidarity. And then I was able to attend the US State Department's Women in Leadership Meeting with their Women Leaders, Engines of Social Change is the title of their visiting troop, and grateful that we were able to visit with them and talk about the effective role of women in leadership positions, and so grateful that we continue to see more girls and young women, and older women aspiring to take leadership positions, so that we can make sure that we're at the table with our voices. And then finally, I just would like to share that I will definitely be there at the street dance, I'll be back in town in time for the street dance on Friday, the 7th, I'll be volunteering there, and hope the whole city will come out to join us, it's always a great time, and we're just going to keep our fingers crossed for great weather. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sloniker?
I had the opportunity to attend the Police and Fire Commission, and it was an honor to see a police officer awarded life-saving certi- certificate, so that was really nice, nice to see that, you know, employee, the police being rewarded for their positive role in the community. And then also, it was an honor to see five police firefighters who now have full-time positions. They had great probationary times through the Saver Grant, so that was nice to, you know, see them recognized as well. I attended the second annual Stop the Violence event as well. I had an opportunity to tour the fire department, or the police department, and then I also attended the Women in Leadership Meeting with Lori, and Anna, Anna and Sheila.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Councillor Hendricks?
I'll be quick. Again, I want to thank the Beloit Police Department, I brought some of my students to the actual department this time. I was with them, I didn't just send them off on a scavenger hunt. But I want to thank the officers that took the time to speak with our students and answer their questions. I think it was very beneficial. I had 30 students, or approximately 30 students, but that's a start in building relations with the police and our communities. They had some pressing questions, we dispelled some myths about things that they've heard, about policing in general, and Beloit police, and I do believe that they are going to build those relationships now, because they'll recognize the officers, they'll be able to feel comfortable asking questions if they need to. I encourage them to speak up if they have information, and then to hear that from the officers as well, and then they got to see the squad cars and view the facility itself. So thank you, chief, and for the rest of the officers that participated. And then I just want to encourage everyone, again, to participate in National Night Out and actually get out and stay out during that time, and enjoy your neighbors and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kincaid?
This will be short. I was on vacation. If you'd like to see the photographs, give me your email, I'll shoot them over to you. I had a wonderful time, I missed everything here, I'm trying to catch up. Thank you.
Councillor Kelly?
I'll be short, too. We are going to be hosting National Night Out tomorrow, so if anyone is by Sherwin-Emerson, we'll be there. Hope to see everyone.
Come in.
Good.
Well, yeah, definitely, people should get out to National Night Out, there are block parties everywhere, go enjoy yourself, meet people, meet people from the city who come by. I'm, I'm going to have a very limited availability tomorrow to get out and about, I've attended every one of them, but unfortunately, it looks like I'll only be able to make a few places tomorrow. But please do, do enjoy that part of your community. And that's all I have today. So, we will move on to item 10, which is city manager's presentation, we do not have one, so the final items are 11, reports from boards and city officers, so we'll do 11A.
Is a resolution approving the 2014 wastewater utility Wisconsin DNR compliance maintenance annual report.
Good evening. The compliance maintenance annual report is to evaluate the wastewater treatment and collection systems for problems or deficiencies. If any problems or deficiencies are noted, an action plan is to be developed to prevent violations of our Wisconsin Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. What all that means is that we're evaluated and graded each and every year by a system that the DNR develop. The key issues that they accentuate is to promote the awareness of responsibility, meaning bringing forth to the council and the citizens, to promote the, again, awareness of responsibility for wastewater treatment and collection system needs, to maximize the useful life of the system through proper operation and maintenance, to initiate planning, design, and construction for upgrades, and again, the bottom line is to meet the permit. We're guided by the EPA and the DNR, we have a discharge permit that we have to meet. As you can see in this year's report, we received a grade A again, and of course, that's a testament to the staff at the, both the wastewater treatment plant, the collection system, and the overall wastewater utility, to their dedication and commitment to excellence. So I take my hat off to staff at the wastewater, the whole wastewater utility. So if you have any questions, I'll take questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the director?
I have a question?
Councillor DeForest?
Thank you. First of all, Harry, congratulations to you and your staff for another A report card, it's fantastic to see this report, and I just wanted to check in with you, because of my concerns about on the horizon, and as the phosphorus limits continue to creep up, have you looked at other options, alternatives to our bio-solid land application? Or we, I know at one point, we talked about some other possibilities, or those things your staff are still looking at?
Okay, first of all, thank you for the compliment, and I'll certainly pass that along to staff at the wastewater utility. We are currently working with a consulting firm on two different fronts. The main front is the phosphorus reduction strategy. We do have a strategy in place. We are currently implementing a pilot program, we hope to go online by the end of August, which will determine, and I believe I told you last year, that if this pilot program is successful, we will save millions of dollars in upgrades. And that's our focus right now, is to make this pilot program successful, and look at a chemical addition, as opposed to building new infrastructure and new, bringing in new equipment to the wastewater treatment facility. So we hope we're successful with the pilot. As far as the bio-solids end, the new operations and maintenance supervisor, Rodney Noble, has been working diligently, opening up new avenues and new areas, not only to recycle our bio-solids, but looking at alternative measures. Any alternative measure is very expensive, so if we can still utilize land application, that's going to be our main focus right now, is still utilizing land application and the beneficial reuse of the bio-solids, using the agricultural community. And I think we'll be very successful still doing it that way. We have to go out a little bit further and utilize other townships possibly, but we are getting a lot of cooperation from the townships, and they seem to be on board. So that's our direction right now.
Okay, great. So at some point, will we look to you to come back and share with us the results of the pilot?
Absolutely. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, I believe we have a, this is a resolution approving the annual, or accepting the annual report, if I understand this correctly. All right, do we have a motion to accept?
Move to approve, or accept.
Moved by Kelly, seconded by Sloniker. All in favor, well, okay, we'll do this by roll call vote, since we've done every other one the same way, and...
Councillor DeForest?
Aye.
Lubke?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Sloniker? That passes unanimously.
And we'll move on to item 11B.
A resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Chambers IV LLC regarding relocation of public utilities on the property located at 2250 West Hart.
Madam Director?
On January 5th, city council authorized an amended planned unit development master land use plan to allow the applicant to construct an assisted living facility on this property. As a condition of that approval, he was required to commission a certified survey map to subdivide the land to create new utility easements for the existing public utilities which cross the property in conflict with the proposed building. The CSM has been prepared, approved, and recorded, and as, also as a condition of PUD approval, he was required to relocate the existing public facilities into approved utility easements at no cost to the City of Beloit. The proposed development agreement formalizes the developer's agreement to relocate the existing public utilities and paid for this location. He has already submitted detailed site and architectural plans, which we're currently reviewing. He has also submitted detailed utility relocation plans, which are being reviewed by engineering staff. At this point, we have issued an early start permit and erosion control to allow them to start doing grading and some site prep activities, and they have also submitted a separate request, which I think you referred at one point, to vacate Tuckaway Lane, which is on the planning commission agenda for Wednesday, which would abandon the small stretch of unnecessary right of way and return the land to the applicant as private property. So what's before you tonight, this separate agreement has been prepared by the applicant, reviewed by the city attorney, city engineer, community development director, and planning director, and the attached resolution would authorize the city manager to enter into the proposed development agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Shall move.
Moved by Kincaid?
Second.
Seconded by Kelly. Any councillor comments or questions? Anyone on the phone? I take this, none, anyone here? Hearing none, we'll call the matter by roll call vote.
Councillor DeForest?
Aye.
Councillor Lubke?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Haynes?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Sloniker?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
All right, and now the, the last item is adjournment, do we have a motion?
No, no, no.
Second.
Moved by Sloniker, seconded by Hendricks. This one will be just by popular acclamation, we won't do a roll call vote for this one. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you, we are adjourned.